To try to look at what we're doing and see is there anything we can do to do this better? And again, is there anything we can do to do it better and how difficult would those things be? There are probably easy things to do and difficult things to do. Let's just see if we can get an idea of what those items would be. So, we spent a year talking about it, talking to other people, and looking at maps and looking to see what maps were available and what things were available, and put together this little report to try to get some information to the supervisors. And we wanted to do this tonight because we've been working on it since January 2, 2013, and we wanted to deliver it in 2013 if we could. But we realized there's turnover happening next month. There'll be a new supervisor, so we're happy to come to another work session or public meeting to have the same discussion again. And also, it's the holidays, so there's probably fewer people here than there frequently are as well. But that's why we're here tonight, and that's what we wanted to discuss. And unfortunately Cathy Shattuck is here as well from BEAC, so there'll be a couple of people here who are familiar with what we did. And Margot Taylor had some discussions with us along the way too, so she can chime in about her involvement if she likes. All right.
Can we give it up on the website so that people can look at it too, or is it too early for that?
Before we do that, I'd like to clean up a couple of the diapers.
Yeah.
If we could. So I put a quick set of slides together just so we had something to guide the discussion. As I said, really, we were trying to say, what are the parameters needed to make a good, sound decision, an effective decision about establishing trails and trail easements in the township? That's what we were trying to get at. And again, we didn't hire a consultant, we didn't do much work outside of what those of us on BEAC could do in our spare time. The way we decided to approach this was, number one, look at the ordinances and see what we can learn from them. What constraints or opportunities are available already in the township ordinances and enshrined there? We also wanted to look at what other resources are available for identifying where trail opportunities exist. Those would be both be township resources and non-t township resources. And look a little bit at the existing process for establishing trail easements. Most of that came from Steve Carter, who's on the BEAC, that was involved with the Schmidt, Schmidt and one of the other conservation easements that was done two years ago at our last year.
Burn.
Yeah, Burn, thank you. And he gave us some of his perspective on how he saw things going and where we possibly have some room for change. So that's how we set about doing this. When we started looking through the ordinances, we learned a lot. There's a lot of mentions of trails in the ordinance. It starts with the definition, just what is it? Well, it's defined up in the definitions, and I've listed it in this report, which is available over on the, if you want to see it. I don't want to read everything in this, but it's essentially what you'd expect. It's a path that's going to be used for walking or biking or jogging and horseback riding. The next thing we were really interested in is, are there any constraints that say, are there places where trails should not be? And obviously, there are hazardous situations where they should not be. But in terms of the ordinance, there really isn't much in the ordinance that we can see that explicitly bans trails from any places. They're permitted in all the zones that I can see, and they're permitted in a lot of the places that are protected, like flood districts and wetland margins and riparian buffers. Even though those areas are protected, you can use them, you can have a trail go through them, and in community open space as well. So we just documented in the ordinance where those specifications are. Then we started thinking about development plans. Just like I said, I've sat through a lot of these in 10 years or so. And what can we find out about how trails could possibly be recommended or collateral that could be created during the process of a planning process that could provide a justification for a trail? And I was surprised to find out, there's a lot of these. And I think this is a great untapped resource in our township. The main thing, and this surprised me, and it shouldn't have, I've been on the planning commission long enough, every time a traffic study is done, it includes a section on the need for pedestrian access and availability of walkways as well as trails. And if I think back about the number of traffic studies that have been done in the last five, 10 years, that's a lot of information about our township and about, you know, we look at that information a lot for roads and road safety and circulation and such. I don't think we look at it enough when it comes to the need for pedestrian, walkways and access. It's certainly one of the things, I think, we should start pulling up when we're looking at conservation easements and trying to determine whether a conservation easement should include a trail or not. There's a lot of collateral information we probably already have on hand that can help us determine how much walking there is in that area, and how much putting a trail through there would be used and would be helpful. Trying to see if there's anything else I wanted to talk about in this section.
Matt?
Yes?
While you're on this point, is there an issue with neighbors along a proposed trail that they can veto the trail at all?
Not that I saw in the ordinance, in the establishment of it. Now, anywhere you'd be establishing it, you're establishing it on private property. And if the landowner is agreeable, if it's an acceptable use, I don't see whether we'd be in issue with neighbors unless it were to somehow control noise or some other violation of an ordinance or design standard that would be necessary to meet one of those requirements.
Okay, I just remember some history over in the cops' order we used to live. The cops and board of superiors was proposing a trail in back of Red Ridge Farms.
Yep.
And there were a couple irate neighbors saying, "What are you crazy? We want to have a trail so drug people can come from Philadelphia and do their business there?" And I was killed.
Well, certainly, you can always kill something because of public objection. But in terms of, you know, what neighbors can do over the establishment of a trail, even they have to show some, you know, armor damage, and it'd have to be a decision of the supervisors as to whether that's, you know, a significant impediment or not. A similar issue I know did happen. There was a rail to trail established along Route 30 in the vicinity of Radnor, I think, and Paoli, not Radnor and Paoli, Radnor, in the Radnor area. And they ended up having to enclose it in like 12-foot-high wooden fences on both sides because of the neighbors objecting to it. So obviously, it can be an issue.
We did have one, Val Moral, initially called for trails. And they went ahead and they built it, and then they were going to put the trails in, but they voted to remove the trails.
The actual community didn't?
Yeah, the community didn't.
Well, I guess that's, is that in the prerogative, or was it in the agreement?
I don't know. I don't recall that point. But in my opinion, the key is to put the trails in before you build the houses. Try and remember that.
Another question we had was about design standards. And there are pretty extensive design standards for trails in the ordinance. And it covers things like width and construction material and, you know, how it should be built. One thing that is specified, it's interesting, it says in the triad in the ordinance is that, you know, a trail that is established should logically continue link or expand existing trails and paths and encourage the creation of an interconnecting trail network. So we actually have that in our ordinance as something that we consider a desirable role. Some of the design standards, when you think about linking together a large trail network across the entire township, may be prohibitive. For example, it says generally, there should be a minimum of six to 10 feet in width. And Tom and I were just talking before the meeting, he was saying, "My easement, my trail easement is 10-foot. So, you know, can you really put a six to 10-foot trail and a 10-foot trail easement and, you know, allow for a reasonable amount of freeboard too?" So that's something that was interesting that we noted. Finally, we were interested in whether the township's ever really enshrined an explicit direction to acquire land or land access through conservation easements for the purpose of establishing trails. And we did not find anything that specifically said that. The township has, in many cases, been generally favorable to the idea of trails and trail networks. One example would be the vote of confidence or in favor of the Red Clay Greenway, which was taken, I think, last year, 2012. There's also, in the ordinance that establishes the land trust conservancy, an article that talks about establishing open spaces for the public benefit. And one of the main public benefits, I think you can think of easing properties and establishing open space, other than just existence value and keeping our rural character, would be allowing a network for walking and circulation for people who want to get places without having to drive all the time. So, that's the best we could find, but I thought it was an interesting point, at least document. So what, that's what we found looking through the ordinances. What's available as a resource for identifying existing trails and trail opportunities? Well, it turns out, there's a lot. And there's a lot more than there was 10 years ago, certainly, when we started putting those maps together. One of the main resources that's becoming available, or set of resources that are becoming available to the township, is new comprehensive plan. And there are a couple of maps in the new comprehensive plan that I think have real relevance to trying to identify and design and establish the potential for trail corridors in the township. One of them is specifically referred to as existing parks, recreations, and trails. This is a draft map from the comprehensive plan, so it's nothing official yet. But in addition to outlining where existing trails are, these dark green lines, which is a nice thing to know, it also specifies in this sort of lake green color, which may be a little hard to tell from the yellows in here, but these are where the protected lands are, which is a really, really helpful thing to see. There are also some dots placed there by the county in terms of not only where potential trails could be and where trails are planned, but how trail networks could potentially look. Now, even with this being said, these are one person or, I don't know, a few professionals' ideas, but it's a place to start, and it's a place to start evaluating what the potential could be. Some of these potential networks are a little more explicitly defined on the bike and pedestrian access map, which is 9-2. And that's this green line here and up in here going across our potential trail corridors that are identified in the process of going through the comprehensive plan. We had also spent some time in the spring reviewing the Red Clay Greenways Plan, which had many similar aspects and characteristics to what was on those two maps being prepared for the comprehensive plan. One of the things I think that was even in greater abundance in the Red Clay Greenways Plan was an understanding of what other trails in neighboring townships and states exist or are planned, and where you can take a trail network in Kennet and link it to existing or future trail networks elsewhere. They actually went further than I thought and talked about linkages that could be established all the way up to Valley Forge, as I recall. Margot, am I going off the reservation or somewhere around there? Is there anything you want to talk about in terms of the Red Clay Greenway?
I wasn't thinking of that as much as I was thinking of Pinky Row sitting down and laying out all the equestrian trails throughout the township, which have a tremendous historic place, and they're there.
Well, and that was exactly where I was going to go next, is the one thing that's not on either of these maps, and the first one was even particularly, I mean, when I saw, you know, the first one, I was like, "Holy cow." I remember talking about this and saying, "Couldn't we get a map of where all these lands are? Now we finally have one." But where the existing trails are that people know of is great. Where horse trails would be would be even better. And where trail easements would be would be even better on top of that. We could have a map that comprehensively listed all those things. I think you get a real understanding of what the opportunities are. So we've got a lot more of the pieces and parts today than we've had probably ever, and could possibly make some headway there. All right. All right, existing process for establishing trail As I said, this whole discussion began over a year ago with Schmidt and Burn. And the big revelation there, to me and to a lot of people, was that legally, trail easements and conservation easements did not have to be tied together. You could do one without the other. And there are good reasons to not do one without the other. One of the main reasons was, for one thing, currently, we're not really doing anything with trail easements actively as a township. It does impose a responsibility or a liability to the landowner. But at the same time, if we want to establish a trail easement, there may be situations where a trail easement by itself may help us accomplish more of our goal than tying it to a conservation easement. And it's something that we really should plan for if we want to go that direction, because it's hard to establish, maintain, and police a network like that through a series of individual landowners each taking responsibility for their own little section. So, understanding that we don't really have a process, it's kind of discretionary at this point. We sort of look at things on an individual basis and say, "Does it make sense for there to be a trail there? Does it make sense for there to be a sidewalk there?" And we kind of take it on a one-by-one basis, has been, I think, to our detriment. And I keep going back to the sidewalk example for the planning commission. We always come up with the same argument about sidewalks, which is, we will have a piece of property where a sidewalk is generally required, and the landowner will ask us to waive it. And they'll say, "Waive that requirement, please, because this sidewalk's not going to go anywhere. There's no sidewalk on this side, there's no sidewalk on this side." And that seems like a reasonable argument, and it's generally met with a lot of sympathy. However, if we don't start building them somewhere, how are we ever going to get them anywhere? And when we leave it to sort of a one-on-one or one-by-one decision like that, we're not establishing a network, we're not establishing a policy, we're just sort of establishing a piecemeal structure that shows up every once in a while, but doesn't create a comprehensive unit. So, the concept of going beyond what we've been doing, sort of taking it opportunistically and looking at it on a case-by-case basis, to try to establishing a set of parameters to say, "This is where we want pedestrian access, this is where pedestrian access is desired, and what can we do opportunistically and proactively to establish that pedestrian access and maintain it in a way that's agreeable to the landowners and useful to the public?" That probably requires a plan. Requires a plan, it requires input, and it requires resources. So if the township's really interested in going down that path, that's what it needs to have. With all of that being hashed out amongst ourselves, we came up with a list of what we call recommendations. And these are not recommendations in terms of if the township doesn't do this, you know, that we're going to fall off the side of the earth. It's a set of recommendations to stimulate discussion, stimulate thinking, and see, again, if this is really something that the public wants, the township wants, and we want to make a priority, these are the kind of things I think we should, we think, we should be thinking about before you start down that path. Our first recommendation was to separate, make it a policy in the township, to separate conservation easements for trail easements. They require specific provisions regarding design and maintenance. They should be established separately, just so that all those provisions can be listed out separately and understood and agreed to by both parties, essentially as they are, so they're not tying two things together. One big caveat about this recommendation, you know, Steve Carter understands how the Natural Lands Trust works. We did not go and talk to Southern Chester County Land Conservancy or the Brandywine Conservancy or any of the other [inaudible].
Can I clarify that it's the North American Land?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, North American Land Trust. I'm sorry, you're right. Keep going through.
And Steve's company doesn't do trails?
Actually, they do. They just won't, they won't do them unless somebody asks for them, and they won't do them unless somebody provides a, essentially, a maintenance plan for them and says, "They won't establish a trail easement unless somebody's prepared to actually maintain it on their land."
Because he was very specific when we were talking about Schmidt saying that they wouldn't do it, and that would have to be given to the land conservancy of Southern Chester County.
Right. And that was because in that particular case, as I said, his understanding was, there wasn't a provision for, "Let's establish it and maintain it." It was just going to be establishing a trail conservation easement without a, without a plan. And their policy and their, and I'm not, I don't work for them, but by my understanding, he said, "We would do it, but we would do it only if it was clear that somebody was assuming the responsibility for it and had the funds to take care of it, and it took the liability off of our back for establishing it." That being said, that's the other thing that we brought up, is, before you adopt this policy, you should think about all the different organizations you may or may not do business with, and do their bylaws or operating procedures or other rules prevent them, preclude them from establishing conservation easements without trail easements. We didn't talk to everybody, we didn't get all that information. But just looking at the way the things are established and the difference in what you're trying to accomplish with the two goals, we think it makes a good idea, a good sense to, if it's possible to do business that way, make it a township policy to separate one from the other. Second recommendation, probably not surprising, was to get a group of people together and create a formal plan or map showing preferred routes for trail corridors. As I mentioned, the resources for doing this and doing it wisely are more available now than they've ever been. In addition to the ones I've already talked about, there's the Kennet Trails Alliance. They are advertising a plan that probably has a lot of merit, looks different from the two I showed you. But before anybody starts drawing any lines on maps, probably needs to be public input, public conversation about not only where those trails can go, but where they're really going to yield the most benefit. And I like to always point out that the people who come to these meetings are not necessarily the people who are going to use those trails the most. A lot of those people who are, don't show up in meetings like this. You have to go out and find them and say, "Instead of walking railroad tracks to get to where you need to go, if we gave you a trail here, would it make things better?" So there needs to be some public outreach, there needs to be a lot of public input. It probably needs to be something that's not necessarily dominated by one particular group and their agenda. It needs to be inclusive of all opinions so that we can end up having a network that's first possible to develop and that will be useful to the public. Establishing a network of this type requires a budget for maintenance and public input as to how the expenses justify, because it's not going to be cheap or brief or easy. And it's going to be a commitment that the township would have to say, "This is a major priority of ours. We want to undertake it. We think it's for the public benefit. And this is how we're going to do it, and this is how we're going to dedicate resources to it."
Matt, I noticed in your point here that you're being specific that the township should take charge of that to make sure it happens.
Correct.
We did not fix a pothole in Way's Lane because we were worried about what Bob Adams told us that, "You touch Way's Lane, you own it," from a liability standpoint. Have we thought through, or has your committee thought through, what the liability would be for the township to mean, for someone getting hurt or a crime being committed on the trail?
No. Have not thought that through, and that would have to be, as I said, part of the public input.
If I can just add, and this is really great, okay, my understanding, is that there is a special statute of protection in Pennsylvania for municipalities for public access on trails. I, great, it's really great.
We need to, we need to underwrite that, though.
Yep, exactly.
Particularly if you have a public meeting.
Exactly. And I think that's part of why you have to determine first gauge how important this is. Now, let's face it, there's a group out there called the Kennet Trails Alliance. There's a lot of talk in the newspapers. It's something that's on people's minds, so it's probably a high priority. But there are a lot of things that are high priorities, and you have to decide exactly how much are we willing to dedicate to them? Are we willing to see taxes go up? Are we willing to get extra insurance? Do we have to do those things? You're absolutely right, Bob, we got to establish that. We also said in this recommendation, let's not throw out the volunteer component. There are Boy Scout troops out there, there are Girl Scout troops out there, there's the Rotary Club, et cetera, that would, I'm sure, Bob, love to help it.
What are you doing to me there? What's one more?
Exactly. So, so let's not throw out that component. But there needs to be ownership of the network if it's going to be established.
The Red Clay thing, that's exactly what happened. I think it was the Lions adopted the trail.
The one that goes from the local field?
The Red Clay in Deverly, yeah.
Yep, exactly. And that, that's the sort of thing that needs to be worked out in the details so that we understand who would be responsible for what.
Well, the kind of run, for instance, puts a lot back into supporting
Yep.
Maintenance of some of Nixon Park places and its trails. And we go out there every May, we being along the Rotary, not me necessarily in particular myself, but the group does, to do the maintenance of it before the run. So, a valid point. There's a lot of groups that'd be interested. And a lot of Boy Scouts and I'm sure the equivalent Girl Scouts need merit badges or whatever they need to go to their ranks. And sometimes, these outdoor projects are right up their alley.
There are opportunities, yeah, absolutely. We're not suggesting that that not be considered. I mentioned this earlier, it would be great to actually see trail easements on a map. Now, we're sorry to show conservation easements as well. For a long time, it seemed like, I think that was almost like secret information. And I think if we're going to go down this route, we need to put them on a map, so people can see where the, where the potential is.
Can you do something like that, Mark?
Can something like, oh, yeah, something like that. Can I personally?
Yeah, I thought you did something.
Um, in regards to putting the, like, any of our plans that have been approved for trails, I, the small work that I did with the Red Clay, you know, trail, there were specific right-ofaways and agreements with them. But I think Matt's bringing up maybe other plans, like, I know across, again, Pinky other plans, like, I know across, again, Piki Row, man, it's like everything's round Herd tonight, but across from Herd Development is an old abandoned roadway, which is now an acceptable trail right-of-way. That's the kind of thing that would be great to have on a map.
Exactly.
So, a lot of that information is not documented, Bob.
Another, another recommendation was, consider hiring an open space program coordinator. So, establishing a trail network is a great thing, but as we mentioned, it's gonna take time and effort, and it's gonna take probably active work by somebody to acquire more conservation easements and/or trail easements along these potential networks, so that we can actually have one. And as we all know, that's hard work, and it's probably more than a lot of volunteers are going to provide. We've done a great deal with the volunteers in this township, but we've also seen the benefits of having somebody whose job it is to actively develop that type of land conservation.
Matt, on this point, excuse me, would it not be an opportunity to, instead of hiring and paying for a position, but to help support, I'm just gonna throw up a trail, like that Kennet Trail Group, and give them some, something, obviously some funds to work with, to further their vision and, and move, I mean, those that have the vested interest, I think, would work the most sincere on it.
The only issue I have with that, is that's certainly one way you can go.
Kind of like how we outsource engineering to our, yeah.
Yes, but, and you're right, and you could do that, you could find someone and you could contract it. I think the main issue there is to make sure that what ultimately, if the township's going to fund it, then they should fund what the township decides its objective is, and not necessarily a group's objective.
Well, exactly. Just that we give our engineers specific plans, what we want them to do, before they pick up the
Correct.
The cram.
So, we had, I forgot. I listed a number of things we talked about that this person could do, in terms of job responsibilities, person-to-persons. Grant writing, identifying viable trail conservation opportunities, website development, and social media and public relations, getting bids from contractors. You're right, you could do all those sorts of things outsourced. The other possible alternative idea we had is instead of making them a township employee who helps Kennet Township, we're talking about trails, which is not necessarily a topic that is limited to Kennet Township. Possibly we could share this person with other municipalities. And one existing venue we have for that is the Kennet Regional Planning Commission. Maybe this person could become an employee of the Kennet Regional Planning Commission, and their responsibility can be shared across multiple municipalities, try to help these things. Now, that may be more, more work than one person can do, or it may be the way a lever stands.
You can try it with a grant focused on what the grant fund, so give one of these organizations an opportunity, put an intern on it, or their own engineers, or whatever.
Our biggest concern with giving it to one organization like that is, one, you might alienate the others, or, two, you'd really want their agenda to be the township as opposed to a specific internal organization. Or, my husband suggested, tonight you do it on a yearly or a five-year basis, and it's a contract that they would have to re-up and see how it goes. But, yeah, I mean, these were all topics that we felt needed to be discussed.
And you can see, there's no one answer to it, it's just a way of stimulating discussion. Bill?
This isn't a new subject, by the way.
No, no, no.
Certainly not a new subject with a regional planning commission. The most aggressive municipality in this whole region is New Garden.
Yep.
And they are, and I mean, really aggressive in this thing. They got plans, they, and I, have we talked to them at all about the issues we're going through? I attended a supervisors' meeting there about three months ago on a totally different subject, and this came up, Ben. And their willingness, not only to keep an aggressive program, but to expand it to include their neighbors. They wanna do this. If you haven't talked to them about their definitions, and their plans, and the way they go about things, I would suggest it's a must.
And I think it's a great idea. I don't wanna have discussions like that until we have an idea of where we're going.
Why not?
And this, this was to bring ideas to the supervisors, to see if they can, it can simulate discussion on where they think the township should be going.
It's all part of putting your program together.
Yep.
Getting ideas from other people, who have already gone through a lot of this.
Exactly. This next one is Kathy Shaddick's fault. Because she came in last week and asked me a very relevant question. She said, what does the EAC do? And we went to the ordinance and read what the EAC did, and we found something that surprised me. But the EAC is specifically charged with reviewing recommendations on acquiring conservation easements. And we haven't been doing that, and I haven't, I didn't know about it until last week, but, you know, I think the LCAC does a great job. I think that's a very difficult and thankless task in many, many respects, and it's a lot of work, and I don't wanna create an extra layer of bureaucracy, but there have been questions about how that process unfolds, and I think getting more public input into it and public, you know, involvement is not a bad thing. And since we have that in the ordinance, perhaps when a conservation or trail easement comes up, a quick meeting between LCAC and EAC, just to say, here's what we're recommending, this is why we're recommending this and not this, make sure it's all in coordination with any existing plans or township objectives, couldn't be a bad thing. And I think it would bring us in compliance with the ordinance. Finally, if there is a plan for developing a trail, we ought to relook at those design standards, because I think those design standards are more the idea of, wow, this is public open space, and it's, you know, 15 acres, and people wanna jog and drive golf carts on it or something. A trail network isn't necessarily that, it isn't going to support that level of, of trail design. So we might wanna look at some of those design standards, so that we can make sure that trails that we put in particular places have some type of design criteria, they protect public safety and facilitate access, but they don't necessarily require an extensive amount of development.
And if I can add to that, Matt, because that certainly is one of the big issues about the Red Clay Greenway, it should definitely look at trail crossings, the process of reviewing and evaluating trail crossings.
Yep.
And a uniform system of signage for walking trails, bike trails, you know, everything, so that there's a uniform system for all those networks in the township.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't want to.
No, no, absolutely. I knew where the roadblock was. Yeah.
So, that's what we wanted to talk about. Like I said, it was mostly to give us, you know, something to do this year, see what we could learn and pass on what we learned to you. Hopefully, it's, maybe we've imparted a new factor to, to you, and, and some new ideas for discussion.
I want to thank you, Matt, both personally and on behalf of EAC, because this was, this was a really strong commitment and a strong effort. And it's really very timely, it's very timely, as we continue to look at what has happened in the past years in my experience, which is very short, much less Bob's and Mike's, but also going into the future. And things are gonna be changing because the personnel are changing, and so bringing this kind of continuity to the picture, and giving us some ideas, not only of the history, but of how the system is supposed to, how it's been structured, is really very important. And so, I'm speaking as a supervisor, as personally, I thank you and the committee for that strong effort. Having said that, there are things that, I mean, first of all, goals, you alluded to it, but what are our goals? We haven't defined those, and that's really very crucial. If you were to amend this, I'd like you to put something in there about, first of all, define your goals. What do you want in the way of? And one of those that I would suggest that you consider is sidewalks. You've mentioned those, particularly in reference to traffic studies and pedestrian access, but there's not a whole lot that translates directly, I don't think, and perhaps you can illuminate that for me tonight.
And I didn't, I kept sidewalks out of there, just we were talking about trail networks, but obviously sidewalks are a, a different priority, because you're talking more about internal circulation in a, in a more concentrated area, but they certainly can be part of a trail network, and if, for example, the corridors we're looking at, coming out of both sides of the borough and then going down New Yorkland, were a
Were the high school from Grant Run.
Exactly. If any of those places were to be what we adopt as a goal, sidewalks would have to be a component to it. And my, my vision would be that if there is a plan for a trail network, it would include a plan for sidewalks where appropriate, and that we would then have, we would remove the discussion of whether sidewalks were necessary in development, because it'd be on a plan as, we need sidewalks, just like it's on a plan saying, we need sewers. But we gotta be very judicious and careful about where we place it. We don't wanna put a burden on people for something that's ultimately not going to, not ultimately not gonna be created. I'd say, let's do that, when we say we're gonna make a commitment to having some type of circulation. And if all we're gonna commit to is circulation in dense areas, then let's put a plan together for that.
It has to come from the top down, I think I'm hearing you say, can't come up from the planning commission and say, well, we ought to do that. It needs to be from, from the commitment of the township that we want. As a township, we want sidewalks.
We want sidewalks, we want sidewalks and a trail network, or both? Yeah. And I think if you set that as a goal, and establish a group to look at it, and set those goals, you can begin, and you can begin to hire consultants, hire designers, to put that plan together, and then bring, you know, hire or contract with somebody to make it a reality. Because I guess two different things. Drawing the lines on the map is one thing, and coming up with the design standards is one thing, then going out and getting the easements and putting them in place is another.
I don't wanna cut you off, but we still have another subject that
Sure. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, and EAC, Matt.
Thanks, EAC.
And I'm sure we'll be thinking about this.
Put that together.
Mr. Yen, you want the floor of this one, or?
Yeah, I'd like to have it. I, I think there was a lot of concern prior to the last election about the superfluous use of political signs. There were some properties that had 10 or 12 signs on them. I think a lot of people felt, as I did, there was an overuse of political signs, and I think at that time I suggested that the supervisors and their staffs look at the sign ordinance relative to political signs. And, for example, I think I said at the last, at that starting meeting, we had to think of, if you'll put this as suggestions, one sign per property, or if you're on a corner, two signs, one on each side, with the permission of the owner of that property.
Yeah, I proposed a thing back in April, and it was sort of put aside.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's
Definitely one of the factors.
It needs to be done before he did this.
It has to be with the owner's permission.
October is starting. These signs started being put up in late September.
They're put up on Labor Day.
Labor Day, yeah. I think they shouldn't be put up until a month before Election Day.
That was also my recommendation, 30 days.
You're right with it. Never on the right-of-way.
That's also my recommendation.
They're enforcing that right now.
Yeah, we're doing that already.
But these are the things that, what I'm just suggesting, get into the sign ordinance and, and put together a proposal that the supervisors would approve. We gotta make some improvement, rather than having what happened at this last election.
You might wanna talk to a new supervisor, since he was very vocal about not doing it.
Bill, let me ask you, does, would the township have, the township would have no control over Victoria Gardens, because it's a private community, and we actually have a rule there that you can't put any political signs.
Okay, all right, that's okay.
But, taking your community, do you have an association board?
We have a homeowners' association.
Do they have rules concerning political signs?
No.
Should they?
It's a private community with a private road, and if they, if the, if the homeowners, individuals want to allow a sign on their property, they can put them up.
Okay. But so what if an association like yours would say, we're gonna allow political signs, and we're gonna allow as many as the owner wants to put on, and the township comes along and says, one sign per property? Who has the right there?
That can be determined by the rules of the game. That's why this thing should be looked at, whether it's a private road in a private community, a homeowners' association, or whatever, but it has to be looked at. We're looking at, we're looking at trashing up our township with political signs, and trying to control it in some way. That's one. I had two other quickies. One was, I really, I saw for the first time in our minutes that we had gone out for bidding for the solicitor, the engineering services, and the landscape architect.
And the township architect.
Yeah, architect. Have we ever done that before?
Not for a long time.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I think it's an excellent idea, I just wanted to comment on that. And the last one was, we have a, a township audit committee. These are people who volunteered to have their names on the ballot, and in order to be on the ballot, they had to supply information on themselves, so that there's no conflict of interest. And there were some people that I knew who objected to that, but they, they stayed on it anyway. They filled the papers out. We don't do anything with the audit, township audit committee. They don't have anything to do.
The law says, who has to fill out that form, Bill? Not us.
I know that, but they do it, they have to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the question is, why don't you consider something that the township audit committee can work at and be responsible for? And the only thing I could come up with quickly was that the audit committee, after the professional audit is done for our township, that should go through the township auditors to say, let them look at it, to say, this looks good to us, or we don't like the procedure, or something like that, before it comes to the supervisors.
You're gonna question a professional lawyer, you don't think that's gonna fly too well?
Yeah, that's not gonna be good. I'm just saying. All right, what else are you gonna do with them?
Well, doing, doing interim work would probably be
But the second-class township code really specifies exactly what the independent auditors do, with or without a professional auditor.
Right.
Yeah. And they don't, they, they have one responsibility when you have a professional auditor.
And what are they?
If a supervisor is hired by the township
To do a job.
And they set the salary.
Right.
That's it.
What, what does the current township auditors do?
Nothing.
Nothing. Right. I think it's a waste of talent.
Okay, but, but I agree with Bob, because the current professional auditor is a CPA, he's a municipal auditor, he works for something like 15 or 16 townships.
Yeah.
And for non-experienced people to question what he did.
Non-professional.
Non-professional, right.
Non-professional, thank you.
All right. What, what can we do with them?
Well, bear in mind that just because they have that one hat on, doesn't mean they can put on another hat. And so, I mean, they ran for office knowing And so, I mean, they ran for office knowing that their responsibilities were zip onto none, they knew that, I presume they did, I hope they did. I mean, you don't normally make that kind of investment in time and energy and ego without knowing what deep quagmire you're stepping into. Bill, you know that in relation to me. But anyway, anyway, they could take that hat off, and they could put on the BAC, Business Advisory.
Sure.
Or they could put on that EAC hat, or any other bunch of hats. If they want to be volunteers, they're welcomed into this community.
Yes.
And it doesn't really matter on the, the shape of the hat, or the color of the hat, but doesn't the second-class township code
What's the second-class township?
Oh, yes, of course, I mean, there are certain limitations, but basically, the principal stairs.
Trying to point out, we have a committee that doesn't do anything, okay? And there are people who have signed up, signed papers, and we need to do something with them, put them on the Financial Advisory Committee or something like that.
Tom, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have one suggestion, when you consider the sign ordinance. There's nothing in the ordinance to date that specifies when you can put signs out at the polling place. Several municipalities have various rules, for example, you can't put them out before midnight of the day of elections, some have them at 6:00 PM the day before the election and such, but you should consider signage at the polling places.
We had an agreement with both parties in the past, as to when they
Yeah, but there was, there's no ordinance
But it's not, there's no ordinance covered now, it was just a gentleman's agreement.
I just wanted to give one update for the planning commission. I had a meeting today with Chester County Planning Commission members.
Add a girl.
Thank you.
There's a sidewalk project that Scudder and I involved in with New Garden and the Borough, and it would go from the Borough Township line into New Garden along Cypress Street, on the north side of Cypress. And then it will go from Penn's Manor, where the sidewalk ends, into the Borough. So there's no cost to the Borough for this, we only have to get their letter of support, it's only in the township, in, New Garden Township. So, Kennet Township has agreed to take the lead on the project.
Did we?
We did. And so I met today with Chester County Planning Commission to talk about how to proceed. We're going to hold a meeting for all the business owners and residents that are along there, and let them know what we're planning to do, because we're going to apply for a grant, which is an 80/20 match.
Awesome.
So, but we want to let the property owners know ahead of time, because they will be responsible to maintain the sidewalks if they're put in. So we're going to hold a meeting hopefully within the next month, and the Activate Kennet Group will be there, will be there in New Garden, and the county. The other part of that is, we will be meeting with New Garden and the responsible parties for Giant, for the complex there, because we want to talk to them about pedestrian flow within that complex once they get to the intersection and cross. So, I just wanted to let you know, that's where we're going. We have a meeting in January with DCEV and DVR PC about the grant project.
If you're going to apply for a grant, can't we make sure that the sidewalks go from Cypress to Victoria Gardens?
Maybe all the way over to Walmart?
We should just do it the whole way.
Yeah.
And we can do them on McFarland down to Meresdale.
I agree, we're done.